Well, hello, everybody. The February 6, 2024 meeting of the Seattle City Council will now come to order. It is 2:01 PM. I'm Sarah Nelson, Chair, President of the City Council. I'll note that Councilmember Morales and Councilmember Strauss are excused from today's meeting. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Saka?
Here.
Councilmember Wu?
Present.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Here.
Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Kettle?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Council President Nelson?
Present.
Seven present.
All right. So moving right along into our presentation section of our meeting today. It's exciting to see everybody here in the chambers. Councilmembers Saka and Hollingsworth have a proclamation proclaiming and recognizing February 2024 as Black History Month. So Councilmember Saka will first introduce the proclamation, if I'm not mistaken, followed by Councilmember Hollingsworth. And then I'll open the floor for comments from council members. After council member comments, we'll suspend the rules to allow Councilmembers Saka and Hollingsworth to present the proclamation to our guests and allow our guests to provide brief remarks. So Councilmember Saka, you're recognized to speak. And introduce the proclamation. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. It is my privilege to introduce this proclamation today, signed by Mayor Harold and our fellow colleagues, Seattle City Council members. I'd like to read a few excerpts from the proclamation. Whereas Black History Month is a celebration of the contributions and achievements of African-Americans and descendants of slaves, first established in 1976 by Carter G. Woodson, a scholar who fervently believed that black people should be proud of their heritage and all Americans should understand the largely overlooked achievements of African-Americans. And whereas across generations, local black leaders have demonstrated profound moral courage and resilience to help shape our city for better and lead industries and movements for change, serve our communities at every level, and advance every field, including arts and sciences, business and law, health and education, and many more. And whereas the city of Seattle is indebted to the black leaders that have contributed to our community, Councilmember Sam Smith, who was the first African-American to serve on the council from 1968 to 1991, people like Walter Huntley was the first African-American superintendent of the Department of Parks and Recreation from 1977 to 1988, Claude Harris was the first African-American fire chief and first black firefighter in Seattle from 1985 through 1997, Norman B. Rice was Seattle's first African-American mayor from 1990 to 1997, Roberta Paul Bradley was the first woman of color to become superintendent of Seattle City Light from 1992 to 1994, Sherry Harris was the first African-American lesbian woman elected to the city council in 1992 to 1995. And whereas 2024's Black History Month theme is African-Americans and the arts and is celebrated across the United States every February through recognition of the achievements of African-Americans and all people of the African diaspora. And therefore, I am honored to welcome esteemed leaders from our arts and cultural space today to accept this proclamation. Mr. Clarence A. Cox, retired legendary jazz educator at Garfield High School. He is one of, he is the one who established this program, resulting in many national level awards and recognition, including taking first place at Essential Ellington Jazz Awards over many, many years. Ms. Ebony Arunga, interim executive director, Langston, an important institution at Langston Hughes Performing Arts Center. Mr. Brandon Byrd, Vice President of Operations, Northwest African-American Museum, which has extraordinary exhibits and programming, band firsthand, love it. Of course, Mr. Brian Carter, Executive Director of Ford Culture, the King County counterpart to our own Seattle Arts and Cultural Office. Mr. Myron Curry, a most prolific mural artist where you will see incredible art, such as the Sandal Park Comfort Station that just finished. Ms. Corinda Harris, Board Member, Art Noir in the Central Area. And last but not least, the esteemed Dr. Robert Radford, Board Member, Onyx Fine Arts Collective, who has also sponsored the Clarence A. Cox Legacy Project.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Thank you all for being here. So, so excited. We know that Black History Month, Black History is every day for us. And we know that Black History Month is a time for us to celebrate and uplift cultures and communities for sometimes other people to, other people to be able to see that they usually don't sometimes because we are embedded, you know, in our community. And the Central District is home, grew up there, born and raised. And a lot of times, it, the, the Central District's contribution to Seattle's cultural landscape extends beyond just the music. I know a lot of times we talk about the Quincy Joneses and the Jimi Hendrix, but also a lot of the artists that live in the Central District and all of the, all of the museums that are in our community. And the James Washington Foundation, which is right down the street from my house, is also a place where, you know, you have community, culture, all connecting and intersecting. And we're so, I'm so honored to be joining Councilmember Saka for this proclamation and to highlight the arts and culture because oftentimes, I think it gets left out of the conversation. And my grandmother always taught me, know your history, know your potential greatness. And as we continue to move forward and incorporate our kids into just, you know, a vibrancy of our life, our goal is that they have to know their history to know their greatness. And one of my favorite places in the Central District is the Douglas Truff Library, with a lot of people don't know, is the largest collection of black literature on the West Coast. And shout out, I know Ms. Corinda's a Delta. It is the AKAs that do upkeep that area, so I don't, I don't want to give you any shots fired there. My mother's an AKA, my grandmother's a Delta, you know, brother's an Alpha, so just want to throw that out there. But us highlighting a lot of those places in our Central District for people to understand that those places are home to us and they have a lot of rich culture and history and for our kids, our babies, to be able to go and help educate themselves and learn about how, how their heritage and how proud they are. So thank you all for being here. We're, we're looking forward to continuing to working with you all as we continue to build out Seattle and, and make sure that we continue to protect our, our culture and our rich history. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll open the floor to council member comments, questions, et cetera. Does anybody want to have anything to say?
The only thing that I will add on is, in addition to everything that I said, love Councilmember Hollingsworth, your authentic voice and words and narratives, plus one. Love it. But as someone who is proudly of African descent, descent of the First Peoples, I, and is also someone who is a proud veteran, and I know Dr. Radford is a veteran himself. And I was able to, almost a year ago, sit down and listen and hear the observations and the experiences of black veterans in this country. Dr. Radford served during World War II, right after, and he, he shared with me some history. Councilmember Hollingsworth, it is important to understand where we come from and so we can chart a better way forward. Dr. Radford shared with me some history about the black veteran experience in this country and how he was assigned to oversee German prisoners of war and in the train ride and carrying them wherever they needed to go in the South. And he was, he described to me the circumstances and incidents where, as a black veteran enlisted at the time, the US military treated our German POWs better than black veterans. And my, oh my, how far we have come and how much further we have to go. But as a black veteran, Black History is American history. And it's something that I'm proud of and I think we all should be proud of regardless of our descent and skin color. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank Councilmembers Saka and Hollingsworth for bringing this proclamation forward and particularly for highlighting the arts and culture. As you all know, I came from the Department of Arts and Culture most recently. And I would be remiss if I didn't add interim director Royal Ali Barnes as also a person to recognize as the first African, excuse me, African-American woman to lead the Department of Arts and Culture right here in the city of Seattle and for her many contributions in the arts world in Seattle. So wanted to, to say that as well. Thank you.
Council President?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add two things. One, I am very proud to serve with my fellow council members Hollingsworth and Saka. And speaking of history, I look forward to seeing the history that you two create and with us as a team create moving forward. So thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
That was a good one. We'll watch their greatness. So as Chair of Economic Development and also a small business owner myself, I would be remiss by not recognizing that in addition to inspiring our lives, teaching us about our past, creating, serving as a vehicle for cultural, economic, and political change, the arts also drive economic activity and are an extremely important part of our, of our economic viability as a city. And so I just wanted to note that arts provide jobs, you create the revenue that we need to help fund all of our programs and essential services. And you, and that is all in addition to just contributing to the vibrancy of this great city. So I always want to put in a plug for the, the economic importance of our arts here in the city of Seattle. And that is not to overshadow what they do for our spirit as well. So, thank you. Now we can present formally the proclamation. I don't know which one of you is going to do that.
I think Councilmember Saka has it. Is that correct?
I have it.
Okay.
Would you like to join me?
May I?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
So if there is, I do have to suspend the rules. If there's no objection, the council rules will be suspended to present the proclamation and allow our guests to accept it. Hearing no objection, the council rules are suspended, the proclamation will now be presented. And then after it's presented, then Dr. Robert Radford will be able to have a, an opportunity to present remarks to us. So go ahead now. Thank you.
[inaudible]
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 Yep, that's working. Go ahead, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to take a moment to thank the council, the mayor, Councilman Saka, for this wonderful tribute that is being shared regarding the arts in Seattle. And in particular, I'd like to shout out to Mr. A. Cox, our legend. Thank you very much.
I promise this will be short. Thank you very much for honoring us and we really appreciate you and all the work that you do in the city. And it makes everything much better for everybody involved. And I want to thank all of you very much. Wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hollingsworth, Councilmember Saka, for bringing this forward. And thank you to the mayor for signing it. Appreciate this today. All right, we'll be moving on to our second proclamation today. Councilmember Wu and Councilmember Morales have a proclamation proclaiming and recognizing February 10, 2024 as the commencing date of Lunar New Year of the Dragon. And Councilmember Wu will first introduce the proclamation and then I'll open the floor for comments from my colleagues. And then after council member comments, we'll suspend the rules to our guests and allow our guests to, to be able to give some comments themselves. So Councilmember Wu, take it away.
Thank you, Council President. So this proclamation recognizes the Lunar New Year, which is a festival of immense significance for many Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities. The Lunar New Year is celebrated across diverse AANHPI cultures and various states with distinctive customs and traditions. It's a time to reflect on the past year, embrace the arrival spring, and extend our collective wishes for a future filled with prosperity. On February 10, the first new moon will start with the celebration of the Year of the Dragon, a creature embodying good fortune, justice, prosperity, and strength. This 15-day celebration is a time to bid farewell to the Year of the Rabbit or Cat and welcome the majestic dragon into our lives. Today also holds special significance because we find ourselves celebrating both the Lunar New Year and Black History Month side by side. It's a powerful moment to express our solidarity and support for both AANHPI and black communities. By recognizing the richness of cultural diversity within our city, we strengthen the fabric of our collective identity. In the spirit of unity, of One Seattle, let us cherish the shared values of One Seattle that binds us as a city. May the Year of the Dragon bring us all good fortune, justice, prosperity, and strength. Happy Lunar New Year of the Dragon, and let us stand together in solidarity with one another with these proclamations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to add, thank you very much for bringing this forward again. I attended two events last night in celebration of the Lunar New Year and saw how, how important, how, and how many people turned out and the messages of justice and prosperity and luck. That room was filled and it, and it just felt to me that I have been, this has been absent from my life for too long. It's, it's, I just really appreciate you putting the focus on this, on this holiday and this community because certainly does resonate for everyone, I would imagine. And thank you very much for bringing it to us. So, would anybody else like to make any comments?
Council President?
Yes.
I wanted to mention, and I said this last night, we, we're at the same event, so I don't want to repeat myself, but one of the main things I talked about is how the Jackson Street links the black community with our Asian community, right? That goes through the heart of the Central District and cuts right down into the CID. And so I think it's a real honor that we have black, we celebrate Black History Month in February, and then we also have our Lunar New Year celebrations that start in the same month. And so it's honored to sit next to you and you have this proclamation and, and for, to show solidarity between both communities. Thank you.
Councilmember, yeah. Councilmember Kettle?
Thank you, Council President Nelson. I just wanted to highlight, you know, again, you know, how proud I am to serve with you, Councilmember Wu, and for the very same reasons, and it's such a, such an honor. And I'm reminded yesterday from yesterday's fire station event, and it's, I think it's timely to make a slight adjustment to say, you know, One Seattle is where our communities help one another. And I think that, you know, what we're doing today on the council, council dius really goes to that. So again, looking also for the history that's going to be coming as we all work moving forward.
Can I say one more thing? I'm sorry. And I want to also thank Mr. Lin Tai for being very persistent and, and making sure that this, bringing the community's voice to make sure this was pushed forward. So thank you.
Thank you for that. So are there, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to echo the sentiments that have been said here, but just feel so proud to serve with Councilmember Wu and Hollingsworth and Saka and this diverse council that we currently have that really represents the many voices and community in Seattle. And I just wanted to say how proud I am to serve with all of you and thank you for bringing these proclamations forward today because it's really important to recognize the many contributions of community throughout the year. I know these events happen yearly, but the contributions of folks in community are over many, many years. And it's the reason we can all be here today. So I just wanted to acknowledge that as well.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I echo the sentiment. I first want to say, express my gratitude and appreciation for Councilmember Wu. For me, like, and I'm proud to support this proclamation, really important. For me, it kind of highlights the importance of representation. And if you didn't know it already, your voice and, and your perspective and the communities that you've been involved with, they matter. They matter to me and matter to a lot of people outside of City Hall. And you now have the privilege of representing Seattle Lights citywide, but that doesn't mean people from your communities shouldn't be proud. They should be. I'm proud to work alongside you. So, representation matters. Communities always matter. And the second thing I'll, I'll note is just, I'm, I was really excited to see that this being introduced by Councilmember Wu and then also co-sponsored by our colleague, Councilmember Morales. You know, we're, we're working really hard behind the scenes. People don't always, in fact, won't always see some, some progress, certainly in this first month, month and a half during these public meetings. But we're working really hard behind the scenes to build a new culture at Seattle City Hall. And one that is, respects people and points of view and finds common ground and differences and, but anchors more on the common ground. So I think this collaboration is, is a true testament to that. So, thank you.
Trenchant remarks. Thank you very much for making those. I appreciate it. Okay. So if there's no objection, I will, the, the council rules will be suspended to present the proclamation and allow our guests to accept it and provide remarks. Hearing no objection, the council rules are suspended. The proclamation will now be presented. And after the proclamation is presented, Lin Tai will have the opportunity to, to make some remarks of his own. So, come on up.
[inaudible]
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 Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, guests, and cherished members of our vibrant community. As we gather here today to celebrate the joyous occasion of the Lunar New Year, I'm filled with an overwhelming sense of pride and gratitude for the rich tapestry of cultures that makes our nation great. The Year of the Dragon has dawned upon us, bringing with it a spirit of strength, resilience, and unity that mirrors the journey of countless individuals who have shaped our country over the years. Let us take a moment to reflect on the Immigration Act of 1917, enacted yesterday, 107 years ago, a pivotal moment in our history that marked the beginning of a new chapter in the story of America. This legislation, while extremely restrictive, could not stifle the tenacity and determination of those who sought refuge in opportunities, not just to achieve the American dream, but also to contribute, give back, and defend the very best of American ideals and traditions. Today, we stand at the testament to the courage and fortitude of those who have come before us, contributing to the vibrant mosaic that defines our great city, our region, and our nation. E pluribus unum, out of many, one. These words etch into the very fabric of our national identity, encapsulate the essence of our collective journey. It is a call to embrace the diversity that enriches our lives for when we celebrate each other, we celebrate ourselves. Let us turn attention to the heart of our celebration, the businesses that thrive in the Chinatown International District and Little Saigon. These bustling centers are not just economic hubs. They are living embodiments of the American dream. Their entrepreneurial spirit that permeates through the markets, restaurants, and shops tells a story of perseverance and success, showcasing the remarkable contributions of Asian-American community and our city prosperity. And if you haven't, please make sure to visit these communities and especially check out the incredible history and cultures embedded within them at institutions such as the Wing Luke Museum and the Nisei Veterans Committee Hall, where they put like their most amazing artifacts of those, the Nisei veterans of the 22nd Combat Team that earned the most distinction and honors of all armed services during World War II. In the spirit of Lunar New Year, let us renew our commitment to fostering an inclusive and welcome society. Let us celebrate the achievements of our Asians-American brothers and sisters, recognizing the invaluable role they play in shaping the cultural and civic tapestry of our nation. Finally, I would also like to express a profound and sincere gratitude to the City of, City, the Seattle City Council for their leadership in proclaiming and recognizing the Lunar New Year 2024. Your commitment to embracing cultural diversity and fostering inclusivity and belonging is a beacon of inspiration for communities across the nation. Your recognition of this auspicious celebration reflects the true spirit of unity that makes Seattle an exceptional city. Happy Lunar New Year to you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for instigating. Okay, any final words? Nope. All right, with that, we'll move on to public comment. Colleagues, at this time, we'll open up the hybrid public comment period, although I do, I do have to note that it seems a little bit anticlimactic after those presentations. Anyway, Madam Clerk, how many speakers are signed up today?
We have five in person and I believe one remote.
Okay, in a break with tradition, I will, let's go with the one remote speaker. Go ahead, please.
For two minutes?
Two minutes, sorry.
Two minutes each, please.
Thank you. We'll begin the public comment period by explaining how it'll be monitored. Each speaker will be given two minutes. There may be in-person and remote public speakers. We will begin with a remote public speaker. Each speaker will be called on by name in the order in which they registered on the website or on the sign-up sheet in chambers. Please begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. And as a reminder, comments should relate to the items on today's agenda, the IRC, or the council's work program. Lastly, speakers will hear a chime when 10 seconds are left of the allotted time. And once you hear the chime, we ask that you begin to wrap up your public comment. And if speakers do not end their comments at the end of the allotted time provided, the speaker's microphone will be muted. And for remote speakers, when you hear that you have been unmuted, please remember to press star six to unmute yourself. And we will begin with David Haynes, who is our first and I believe only remote speaker. Go ahead, David, and please press star six. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. This is David Haynes. To paraphrase Martin Luther King Jr., the namesake of King County, judge a man by the content of his character, not his skin color. And if you apply that to the spinning priorities and the bad bottom-of-the-barrel policies, you will find that they have exempted customs violating misinterpretations of liberty and freedom and crimes and have forsaken innocent people who've been subjected to some public safety violations. And I bring this up because some people sabotaged the integrity of police reform, defunded, and then redirected to some bullies and activist racist woke protesters who shook down City Hall. And if you're going to do any accountability, there's a couple people within the community safety who pocketed $30 million a year. They were supposed to trade and split $15 million each with the Equity Development Initiative, but the previous council snuck an extra $30 million. So a $60 million priority that takes away from public safety makes the whole community suffer because some people are trying to manipulate the skin color incarceration rates at the expense of public safety and homeless innocents who are being denied because evil criminals and self-destructives are given priority. And they've undermined the community for everybody. And it doesn't seem fair that everybody has to be subjected to a double, triple, remortgage shakedown on some rundown real estate. We need the council to step up and make a law that prioritizes that the banks have to finance new homes, buildings, and schools and libraries with a robust floor plan to make space for all the additional people that are not going anywhere. They need a quality of living. But all people being played against each other for the wrong reasons to distract from an immoral financial system that needs to be disciplined of its creed. But...
Thank you. Your time has expired. That's our only remote public commenter. Thank you.
Our first in-person speaker is Kathleen Bros.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Kathleen Bros. I'm a resident of Ballard, and I'm, I was born and raised in Seattle. I was at the meeting last week when a group of refugees came here from other countries, came here asking for more money or asking for money for housing. And I'm not without compassion. Where all our ancestors were immigrants. However, I have a budget. You have a budget. And your budget is in the red. And my budget might be in the red pretty soon if taxes keep going up. You were elected to make these hard decisions. And we can't keep giving money to anyone who asks for it. You're going to have to make some cuts to the budget, and it's going to be difficult. And I don't envy you there. But the word's probably already out that we, that the mayor authorized another week in this hotel for this group of refugees. It's probably gone across the world. Come on to Seattle. We're open. We'll give you housing. But we have people on our streets. We have to take care of the drug addicts, mentally ill, other people living on the street. So these are tough decisions you have to make. But we can't give money to everyone who asks. You've got to take care of the people who live in Seattle, okay? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Zhihaile, my name is Alex Zimmerman. I'm president of Stand Up America. I want to speak about Agenda Number G, Bill 742, about $30 million. Guys, I always have one small question to you because the situation, what is I explained to you right now, is very interesting. Why you don't give this similar $30 million to Black community, what does he move out for last 10 years from Seattle? Can you explain to me? It's approximately 50,000 people, Black. Most of them is Black, so Black community gun. Why? I don't understand this. So I explain to you what's happened. For 10 years, you not support minority like Black and another minority. You support Amazon. 50,000 people from Amazon, you know what it means? What is working here? Bring Seattle for last 10 years from $70,000. 10 years ago, average income, $250,000 to $40,000 income, doubled. How is minority like Black can survive? Why you doing this? Why you support corporation more than ordinary American and exactly pure, pure community like a Black community? Can you explain to me? From my understanding, this is a classic fascism. I think Mussolini talk about this when government support corporation is a classic fascism. For this, I call you dirty Nazi freaking junta because you not care about ordinary people. My proposition, and I speak right now to everybody who listen to me, give $30 million to this Black community who you move out, you move them back. And move 50,000 people from Amazon. You know what it means, out? Like to Bellevue, for example. You understand what it means? What does one bring right now, 30,000 people from Amazon? Doing this, and you right now have Black inside, thinking about ordinary people. Stand up America, it's our goal. Thank you very much.
Mr. Zimmerman, I have to say, I really have appreciated the past couple times you have not called us names. You have been, you have spoken to an item on the agenda, and you've made some good points. And so thank you very much for that. It is much appreciated.
Our next speaker is Gary Lard Zibell.
Hi, thank you. And I'm very, have a lot of gratitude for the new council. So I'm here to talk about the Gig Worker Ordinance. And that was sponsored by Lisa Harbold and Andy Lewis. So I'm actually on King Five News this past Sunday night. If you Google King Five News, and it's definitely backfiring, that's me with the same hat. I invite you to read that story. There's some points in there. The points I'd like to make today are cost analysis. And I'd very much like for each and every council member to do homework in their district. Businesses are wondering what's going to happen. I have three points. Basically, what are customers paying? Well, a $19 total cost for a burrito from Chipotle used to cost $19, like with a $3 tip. These are my esteemed colleagues on the bike here in support today. So essentially, now that $19 burrito costs $35. So I invite you to seek that out in your own local restaurants. What are the sales for DoorDash and Uber Eats? Law Pomer on Mercer, it's down 20%. What background context did Lisa Harbold and Andy Lewis do? Did they do a cost analysis? Did they even think what the output was going to be on the cost of? Did they think it was going to be a $35 burrito? We're here now. It's reality. It's a $35 burrito. Our orders have gone down. I don't even do breakfast anymore. That's my quote on King Five News. I invite you to look at it again. Essentially, I would like for you to do a cost analysis of this. And they didn't even ask DoorDash or Uber what their reaction was going to be.
Our next speaker is Heather Nelson.
Thank you, councilmembers. I appreciate the time today. I'm speaking in the same ordinance that was offered to the gig workers this past year, starting on January 13th. That was supposed to guarantee a minimum wage. And that was a $5 per order amount, per order that we would accept. And I don't know who did the math. I know I can't ask questions. I'll ask rhetorical question for you to do your research on your own. But the math came out to be about $26 an hour, which is impossible. It's impossible. And so the homework needs to be done there. We understand why you did it. And in the beginning, before it actually was instituted, we were excited about it because we thought, okay, we're actually going to make a livable wage. Because most people don't realize that 90% or more of our income comes from tips. It does not come from Uber Eats. We may get $1 or $2 from them, but that's it. And so if we don't get any orders all day, we don't make money. The more orders we get, the more money we make, obviously. And what's happened now is that customers in Seattle are boycotting the app and have either deleted it or they're not ordering because, for fair reasons. Like Gary said, a burrito is more than double the cost. And that's before they even tip. And so if somebody's going to even order, they're not even going to tip. A lot of my colleagues' income has dropped by more than 50%. It's not livable. And this is going to destroy gig worker economy in Seattle. Bottom line, I think that the first answer would be to repeal the law. I don't know what the answer would be going forward. That's up to you. But right now, this is destroying their incomes and their livelihoods. I also want to also point out that the narrative that was spun about the $26 an hour, most people thought that that was a real thing, that that was going to happen, and that is not happening at all. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Nicholas Panchat.
Hello. I'm a bicycle courier here in the city, and I work for all of these app platforms. One, my two colleagues here have touched on. They have the numbers. But I'm here to speak to the, to the root and the heart of the situation. My father was an immigrant to America who was chasing the American dream here. He passed away two weeks on him before he was 26, before he received his citizenship. He worked very hard for it. I, too, am chasing the American dream, as are dozens upon dozens of fellow couriers that I work with and know on a very personal level. This law that was passed on the 13th has affected us greatly. Delivery is not something that should be available in the city, in this metropolis, to only the elite and people who can afford it with very large pocketbooks. Everyone deserves this kind of service, from single parents to sick individuals, injured individuals. It should be an option that should be available to everyone. And this law has vastly changed that. It's hurting businesses, dozens of businesses, small businesses, even large businesses have lost 30% of their income. We work on these platforms, at least I do. And many of us also do, not just to make a quick buck or to have no other job that we'd rather do, but to be able to provide our professional services to so many citizens and to help keep the wheels of commerce turning in this city. It is a necessary, a very necessary profession. And to see it dying like this is heartbreaking to not only myself, but dozens of couriers in this city and many other cities around the nation, and also to many, many businesses that mean so much to our, to our community. Really, it really needs to be repealed. Thank you very much.
That is the last registered speaker.
Thank you. Just a moment, please. I do want to take a moment to, to recognize your comments, folks that just spoke. I am the only one, I believe, on the stage here, well, before you here today, that was part of the committee that, that forwarded that to full council. So I remember these discussions very well. And like a broken record, as a small business owner and as a new person to council before, after the proposal came forward from Working Washington, I said, this will have all sorts of unintended consequences. That, that delivery services that became, that went from a convenience before the pandemic became an essential service during the pandemic with many people, including our most vulnerable, extremely dependent on them. And that the changes, you know, the establishment of a minimum wage standard and a bunch of the other regulations that went along with that in rules will have unintended consequences, not just for the networks that will, that, you know, like the Ubers and the DoorDashes, et cetera, but also for the small restaurants and businesses that are being ordered from, not just, and/or for the customers that are going to be paying higher prices when, when their medications or meals are delivered at the door, but most of all, for the workers who this is intended to help. And so I am not, it's not a good thing that, that that fear is being, is coming to fruition. I just wanted to say that I hear you very much, and I'm not really quite sure what the next steps are. But I have received emails from each of those constituencies, drivers, small businesses, and end users or customers. So thank you very much for speaking out today. All right. One moment, please, while I gather myself again. Okay, public comment is closed. And we'll go on to our other items of business. So with no objection, if there is no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing none, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. And if there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing none, the agenda is adopted. We'll now consider the proposed consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include only one, Council Bill 120742, payment of the bills. Would anybody like to remove that? Excellent. So there are no items removed. With the, with the clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the consent calendar.
Council President?
Councilmembers? Thank you.
If you could please move it.
Oh, yeah. I moved to adopt the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Will the clerk now please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Wu?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
And Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Seven in favor, nine opposed.
Thank you very much. The consent, the consent calendar items are adopted. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes in legislation on the consent calendar on my behalf? Okay, folks, there were no items removed from the consent calendar. There are no committee reports for presentation today. And there are no resolutions for introduction and adoption. Next week, however, there's going to be a whole bunch of stuff. Just kidding. Now that we're just this week getting started with our committee work. So with that, if there is no other business, no absences to request? Okay, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. It is February 6th, 2024, at 2:50 PM. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.